Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. We'll call to order the school committee meeting for Thursday, January 7th, 2021. I hope everybody had a nice break and enjoyed your holidays. So we will just get started. Vote to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2020 open meeting. Everybody's had an opportunity to review those minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor? I think we were all there, right? Sherri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
All that, yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thanks, everyone. I'm Sherri Warrens.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants: school expense warrants on December 16th, 2020, $550,548.94, and school payroll warrant on December 3rd, 2020, $988,169.4. I wish to enter into public record.
Thanks, Sherri. We will move to our student representative updates. Malia and Zoe. Hi, welcome back.
Hi, Happy New Year, everyone. So at the JCS, students are happy to be back, and classes are participating in goal-setting activities for the new year, both personal and academic. So Zoe will do the LGN.
At the LGN, the students are really excited to be back after break. Ms. Luke said that the teachers are rested and ready to teach. They had a joint sing-along with the LGN and the JCS with Mr. Place on December 21st, and Mr. Place worked alongside the technology department to make the event available via Zoom for both schools, and it was a very fun-filled event for all of them. Malia, you have the YEL.
So the YEL is preparing for their Booster-Thon fundraiser, which will be featuring a virtual dance party with everyone who participates. Mr. Gigan says that students are pumped to be back, and he believes it was the perfect amount of time off, and that this week's Remote Monday only helped with the transition. One of the main things that Zoe and I were wondering when we sent our emails is actually what changes and what improvements people are making. And Mr. Gigan specified that the YEL is trying to safely engage students in more collaborative learning, and they're starting to slowly introduce that, still distance, but just in a safe way, partner work, collaborative work, teamwork. And they also have had teachers create schedules for students who are struggling with organization to help them keep on task. He said that everyone, I'm sorry, my bad. As everyone knows, we had our first full remote trial day on December 18th, and the YEL saw 96% of students engaged online. So Zoe will move over to the middle school.
For the middle school, so as the tradition, they did their holiday festive ugly sweater contest, and we actually have a Google slide presentation that Malia is going to try to share her screen if possible. So the middle school created this with, it was a little less participation than usual, but they still had a really fun time doing their tradition every year. They also have had, are going to have, a no-name-calling week for GSA. They came up with the idea about sending a daily positive email each day that week, and they're reaching out to ask anyone to send any positive messages, quotes, images, or anything else that you can put in the daily positive emails to all staffs and students that week. So they're asking anyone if they want to do that, you can send it over to the middle school. And they also have a daily kindness challenge, such as give someone a compliment day or ask someone if they need help today, and they want to see kindness in action during that week and moving forward. They want all students to feel safe and have fun in school, so they're very excited about what's happening at the middle school recently. It's a very nice presentation, pretty funny with some of the stuff that they talked about on there. Okay, I think that's it. I think we can move to the high school now, which I'll just start with what I was seeing at the high school. It was really exciting that today, Mr. McCoy's civics class, they took the kids to the auditorium, and they got to talk about what's happening in America today with the Capitol, and that was a really big discussion. And I think Dr. Baez was on there too, so that was pretty, a big event that everyone was talking about today. And teachers led different discussions in every class or some of the classes to talk, see what students actually had to say, so it made their voices feel heard. Malia, do you have anything else to add?
At the high school, I think we're also trying out different schedule changes as well, so nothing too big, but we're finally, I think, settling into like a routine that we can stay with. And I think that's about it. If Zoe doesn't have anything else to add?
Thanks, Malia. Thanks, Zoe. You know, I think in the midst of sort of chaos and a pandemic and certainly a lot of change, it's nice to see students being able to be in school and enjoy each other, enjoy their friends, enjoy their teachers, and sort of have some of those traditions sort of maintain themselves. So thanks for sharing that. Anybody have any comments before we move on?
I just love like the way they go back and forth. It's like media, it's like Channel 5, Channel 4, Channel 7.
Right.
Love it.
Maybe we'll see them on TV one day.
No doubt.
We will move on. Jen, I will turn it over to you, review of the parent remote day survey.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Good evening. As we all know, on Friday, December 18th, we had our first district-wide remote day. While it was the first district-wide day, it was not necessarily the first remote day for some of our other classes and students. We have had a few classrooms that have had to go remote this fall, so they were old pros at it by the time the 18th came around, but it was also a great opportunity for the rest of our staff and students and our families to experience what a remote day was like. So we sent out a very simple, basic survey after the remote day, basically just asking parents what school their child attended, what grade they're in, and if they were engaged in remote learning or not on that day. And the reason we kept it pretty simple was to, number one, we want parents to complete a survey for each of their children, and we didn't want to make it too cumbersome. And just to, you know, were they engaged or were they not? And we actually, we also did a comment box, and we got a lot of really great comments from families, which were so valuable to the survey process. So out of our 2,500 students, we had about 1,400 responses, 1,396 to be exact. And within those responses, we had 90.9% of the responses say that their child was engaged on remote learning on that day. Parents actually clarified their statements a little bit. You know, some of the feedback that we got from them was very, very interesting because they said that "my child was engaged for most of the day," or "my child was engaged in the morning," and then it became too much for them. So finding out why students were engaged for part of the day or, you know, not at all was actually really beneficial for us. In general, some, you know, things that were noted about pre-K to 5 was that some families had intermittent internet issues. There were suggestions for giving students more breaks. Some families felt that the time that students were in front of their computer was too much. It was a little bit too long. Students, you know, especially our youngest learners, started to get a little bit wiggly. It had much more of a difficult time attending the longer that they were on during the day. There was a lot of positive statements and feedback about our staff and the amount of engagement that they provided their students. They were very well-prepared for the day. Students really enjoyed the interaction between themselves and their teachers and their peers because when they're home in the hybrid days, as we know, they don't have that opportunity. There was also several comments for, from families about how really the best option for their youngest learners is to be in school more often, and that remote learning was not appropriate or conducive to learning for their child. At the secondary level, we saw some similar comments in terms of some intermittent internet issues. It was too long of a day. It was too much. Kids were exhausted by the time they finished their final class. There was also some comments about, you know, the teacher came in and gave a very quick assignment, and then the students were free to work independently. So I think that's something for us to ensure that we're communicating with our staff and with our families, what the expectations around those remote learning days are. But also comments at the secondary level, the educators did a great job and that they had, they were very well-planned for the day. Overall, good feedback from our families. We, you know, all know that we could go remote at any point, so I think having one day under our belt gave people a little bit of an understanding of what it would look like. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the survey or further questions.
So Jen, with this feedback, what is sort of, what are you doing kind of in regards to this feedback to support staff in the process or to support families, you know, the 8% of families who really had a difficult day? I'm sure that number is higher. You know, we all know that only a handful of families responded, so we have to assume that that number is higher. But so what were the next steps that you're taking?
So this has actually been very good information for us to have as we work with the Joint Labor Committee. As you know, we meet with the NTA every single Monday. Today, we met, we met Monday, we met today for two hours as well. And looking as we're expanding our platforms and looking to create more of a robust remote learning plan, we're taking this feedback from families and looking at ways that we can improve the process, improve the schedule. Earlier today, we sent home a memo to students and families regarding a requirement around the increase in live instruction for both the hybrid model and remote models. So that's something that we've been working really, really hard on over these last few weeks, and having this information about what worked for students and families and what didn't has been instrumental in that process as we are designing this next level of teaching and learning for our students.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
So just a, just a comment, and I've talked to Dr. Baez about this already, and Jen, you probably heard. I was a little bit disappointed in the survey itself. I understand the idea that, you know, we wanted to have some brevity. However, at the same time, I thought that we could have at least gleaned a little more information with, with very few questions. And I understand the value of an open comment section. It's a great way to get qualitative feedback. I'm not so sure it's a great way to get quantitative feedback. And when I say that, what I mean is it's extremely hard to take a bunch of open responses and silo them into actual issues, if you know what I mean. So.
Yeah, it's a whole coding process, right?
Yeah.
Go through and really get into that.
Right. And again, I know that we were doing this kind of quickly because, you know, we didn't know until very late that we were going to do a remote day. So it was kind of rushed, but at the same time, you know, next time at least, I think I would do something a little bit more extensive. Even questions like, you know, "my child was engaged?" "My child was engaged for how long?" You know, things like that give you information, they give you data points that I think are going to be really important for us, particularly if we do end up going back into something like this. I think we want to know before we, before we get there, what did and didn't work. And for me, right now, this survey doesn't tell us really what didn't work. It just says, yeah, people were engaged at some point during the day, and that's the only takeaway. You know, the, again, the open comments are kind of tips and tails. I don't know what to make of those, frankly. So just, it's, you know, again, I understand why it, why it happened the way it did, but next time we should be a little bit more extensive, I think.
And we can certainly do that. You know, Dinesh, I know you're, you're a numbers guy, right? And so the qualitative data for you, it doesn't hit those buttons for you. You want to see the quantitative data, which I totally understand. So we can certainly do more of a combination in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying. It's just, again, more, more of the actual data points so that we can determine like, you know, if 70% of the people say, yeah, my, my kid was engaged till 11:30, and then they couldn't, you know, they couldn't really, really reconnect at that point mentally, that's important to know. You know, that's, that tells us where the tipping point is. So just, just something to think about.
Absolutely.
The other thing too, Jen, I sometimes think if you actually, you know, and I don't know this for everybody, but sometimes you don't really know how to answer when it's just sort of an open comment box. You know, I have a high schooler who is pretty self-sufficient. You know, I don't know kind of sometimes how to answer some, you know, how to just kind of put in a comment, but if you had asked a specific question, maybe, you know, "how long was your child engaged for?" I could tell you she was sitting at the kitchen table for, you know, so many hours. So sometimes it even kind of directs kind of a thought process, and it helps families or parents who maybe aren't so comfortable with just sort of an open response, just to maybe have more direction. So I can absolutely see why that might be valuable too.
Sure, we can do that.
But I, you know, I think we're all hoping that we can sort of maintain status quo, right? That we can continue to keep our students in school, that we can continue to sort of, you know, just use some of these, you know, this data as kind of research only and not actually have to implement it for our hybrid students. I mean, that's our hope, so we'll all keep our fingers crossed. And it's good to sort of compile this, this information and data, but maybe, you know, if we're lucky, we may never have to use it for sort of our hybrid students at least.
Every day that we're here is a win, so, you know, one more day is a good thing. So we'll take as many as we can.
Exactly, exactly. So I do appreciate, and I also, you know, I know from sort of, you know, the teacher's lens, I think that sometimes the, the kind of comments, Jen, I'm sure as you were reading them, you immediately were sort of making kind of these visualizations of, oh, well, I can see where that could happen or those. So I think, you know, sort of being in the school and in sort of being, you know, sort of knowing your, your staff and knowing kind of the, I guess, the process, it probably was helpful for you, and I really appreciate you being at the table with the Labor Management Group so that you can really sort of have these conversations and come up with a plan that would support not only our students who are comfortable and performing well, given kind of the constraint of being in front of a computer for that many hours, but also really considering students where that isn't sort of the, the most advantageous learning technique for them. So thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
And we will move on.
Yeah, that's okay. So Jo, I'm just wondering if we, or Dr. Baez, can we just get a bit of an update? I know I've been asked a number of times, the email that was sent out today with the increase in live instruction. Do we have any feedback about whether we're talking about doing live streaming with our, with our teachers? And also, you know, another question, and I know this seems impossible right now because the numbers in Norton are far higher than they were when this pandemic first started, which is another reminder for people to please try to do, you know, what we're supposed to be doing right now so that we can stay in school as long as possible. But, you know, the question has been asked of me numerous times about, you know, returning to school more with our students. And I, I think that, you know, just because I know the state was, was talking about that pre-holidays, and it seemed like they were really going to try to push for that sooner rather than later. So are there any updates as to where any of that stands?
Yeah, so if you remember this summer, we were asked to file after numerous committee work. As you know, we had more involvement by staff and parents and everything else than probably any other local district. And we published our three reopening plans, the traditional reworking plan, the hybrid, and the full, the full remote. And then the goalposts got moved, and, which is something that's very interesting. For the first time in the history of the Commonwealth, the Board of Education has decided through the Commissioner's Office to, on a recommendation, to have minimum seat time per week in a hybrid model, which is 35 hours, and a remote model, which is 40. That is not the digital learning academy model. That's a parent choice. That's different from the core of the, of what the district is doing. So we are currently working as a group of eight in the Labor Management Committee, have put forth a proposal based upon the quote "more lifetime" that needs to take place. So we plan to provide that to you and to the parents, and this would be specifically for grades 1 through 12. It does not involve pre-K and K. And the, the idea is that within your hybrid model, that you are seeing your students on a daily basis. So the students that are home are quote "live," getting live instruction for specific times of that class. And we are going to be, for example, targeting areas, if you will. At the secondary level, students will have X number of minutes, for example, in their English class, where the students that are in the classroom and the students that are at home are getting live instruction at the same time. Then the students at home go into finishing their work, if you will, continuing their work, while the teacher is spending more one-on-one time, if you will, with the classroom. That's all a negotiations process. We're at a, at a great place. Again, we, we met today for two hours, achieved, checked off the box almost every single item that we need to. And we're going to meet with, the committee's asked to meet with Karen Winsborough, our Director of Instructional Technology, to really discuss some options around other needs, wants, best practices. That's going to happen Monday afternoon, and we expect to get information to the staff first because, you know, they, they're, they're the people that are working and doing the work, if you will, and then to families because there will be some quote "changes," especially at the elementary level, making sure that parents and grandparents and wherever they're staying during their remote day knows when a student needs to check in and check out and that type of stuff. The last part of that, that's important, is some serious concerns about the model. You know, the, the model that's being pushed is really a lot of, within the remote model, the full remote calls for a lot of screen time. And as you all know, and I know some of you don't agree with me 100%, but I have some concerns about the amount of time of looking at a screen through the, the process of being educated and learning that not every student can achieve at a high level. But for the hybrid model, which is the model we continue to be in, I think that there will be some, lack of a phrase, some growing pains. But I also know that it, the positive of that is that a lot of what I know you, the five of you here and I here, and even our teachers here, is that parents and students and our own staff want more time with students. To address the section on more kids coming back to school, that's probably going to be pushed back a little bit more until we see what's happening, number one, with this vaccination situation. We, our nurses have been moved into Phase 1 of vaccination. They are now part of the first responders group. All other educators and all those people working in our buildings are Phase 2. That phase is, will start, will start sometime between February and April. You might as well have told me that it's next December. But it's going to start sometime between February and April. So February, March, which is a very long month as we all talk about every year, and then April. That leaves us with May and two weeks of June of school, so let's hope that it's earlier. And the problem is we don't know what the distribution is. The state is expecting, and DESI is expecting to, to either utilize schools, which I think is the best model, or to do it regionally, where educators must make appointments to go get their shots. That is a nightmare for us because people work in different communities, therefore they're probably in different regions, therefore, et cetera, right? Somebody might be told that they have to go at 9 o'clock. So what does that mean to teaching and learning for that day? So I have concerns about that, and I informed those above me that I have concerns about that. So that's the big picture of those two critical going-forward items. I did that have, I did have that under my other section for you tonight because we literally had a two-hour meeting. We had a meeting Monday. We had a two-hour meeting today. I had a commissioner's call today, which is where I got some of that information. And then lastly, the, the impact on once the actual vaccinations take place, which right now is a two-part process roughly about three weeks apart, what does that mean in terms of no one under the age of 16 is taking the shot? And our numbers in Norton aren't necessarily growing exponentially much larger with kids in 0 to 18, but the fact is statewide, that number is growing faster than it has in the prior March through, let's say, first week of December. It's just growing quicker. Right now, it's, I think for us, it's either the fourth or fifth largest group of the age brackets. But, you know, we're seeing more and more of that, that growth every day. So the concern is, does that still mean six feet? Does it still mean masks? Does it still mean, how do we get kids on a bus? How do we feed them? And so it still has a lot of these implications. The concern is that hurrying up to come to school, which we all want, could backfire and end up where we all come in because people are vaccinated and everybody's saying that you can do this and you can do that. It'd be interesting to see how the CDC responds. Remember the Pfizer vaccination, just this, this evening, Channel 4's doctor said, you know, she got her second shot, and she noted 95% effectiveness. In other words, there's still 5% out there. So it'll be interesting to see how we're able to, to deal with all of that stuff because children aren't being given this vaccination as they do with things like the flu and all this other stuff, that, that just isn't enough research for them to go lower than the age of 16 right now. Long story, sorry.
Sherri, did that kind of give the overview?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what we needed. I, I know I've just been getting a lot of questions. I know I see a lot of stuff on Facebook about it, so I just figured why not just address it at our meeting tonight? Because I, I'm sure that most people that are on tonight are, are waiting for that kind of update.
It's important to remember that we're trying to take our model and take it to the next level, but at the same time shifting it in such a way that for some of our students that are home remote, this is going to be our, on the hybrid model, this is going to be fascinating and awesome, and for some, it actually may cause more stress. So it's going to be interesting, but the expectation is that staff, teachers, professionals, support staff are spending more time with students daily.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Dr. Baez, the review of the NASDAQ enrollment projection report and school choice enrollment?
Yeah, so this is, we do this every year, as you know, since I've been in Norton. We work with the New England School Development Council, and they do a projection report based on a couple of different key factors around single-family homes that are being built, multi-units, and then everything to do with births, births in that particular year. So what you have in, in front of you basically breaks down everything, and you'll see that there's, there's really two areas that the projection enrollments show us some good pieces of information. Number one, for this year in particular, we're down about 30 to 35 preschool enrollment students. We're hovering right around 72, 73, 74. We were as high as 113 last year. We all know what that's about, right? That's about, I'm going to not put my child through this process this year. I'm not going to pay tuition if, you know, in fact, they're only going to school X number. It's too dangerous, or I'm not feeling comfortable with it. So we, we recognize that. We also know that part of the projection, part of our enrollment decline is that we've doubled the number of students that are at home under the concepts of homeschooling, but haven't been in the past. Our traditional 19, 20, 21, 22 families, our 22 students that actually do homeschooling. So that number's grown. They're, thereby, they've unenrolled from the district. So that, that's another number that is, is out there, and that's a constant across almost every single district. And then the last part is we know that our bubble of lower numbers is going through, starting now in the upper elementary schools. And then the last part is, we know that our bubble of lower numbers is going through, starting now in the upper elementary schools. The projection, though, is that we're going to see slight increases over the next few years in our elementary enrollment, which is a good thing, not a bad thing, because that's been an area where we have seen significant decline. Now, what we're going to see is you're not going to see classes of 280 anymore like in the old days. But I think you're going to start to see instead of classes of 150 and 155, you're going to see more classes of 165, 170, and potentially 175. And that's without any of the school choice. So that's the general gist of what I received from this report as I looked at the data. I don't know if any of you, as you looked at it, had other thoughts. I will tell you that the other connection that goes with this on the second on the last page, actually, is the whole idea of how much of a decline we've seen in in Massachusetts, for example, in terms of it's the second fastest declining pre-K to 12 enrollment in public education. First is Connecticut, by the way. That's that's always of interest to us. And then the last part of this, not on this, but also impacting enrollment, including our own, is how many students have left for private schools, including elementary, middle, and high private schools, and will they return to public schools, or will they stay out and continue in their in their private school setting because of the different models that were provided back in August and September? And remember, this is taking data from another from other sources and then putting it in together. So this data has as many flaws as any other data collection that you do that that you're just basically utilizing the best information that you can get and then tossing it into a calculation. The last one is, you know, one that is, of course, interest interesting to us. We're in year five of school choice. If you can believe it, I just thought it was yesterday, and and we've grown from 52 students to 168 students in that time period. And we've grown from about, on average, about 64% of our students in school choice in the first year were in K through five, and now it's about 52%. In other words, that the the reputation and everything else has also gotten out there. We've seen some pretty significant growth in grades. Well, kindergarten right off the bat, but if you take a look at the number of students from year to year and new students, you know, we're we're up almost 30 students from last year. So Norton Public Schools continue to have a good reputation in the surrounding communities. And then if you look at that breakdown, you'll see again that the numbers are pretty heavy are pretty good numbers, I should say, between K and in eighth grade, then lower numbers are at the high school, but that's been that that's typical under this choice plan that we have. So and you'll have a recommendation from me in February or March for school choice going forward. And that a lot of that would have will be discussions about where the budget lands and and how many kids are we projecting are actually going to come back? And we should be able to see that that re-enrollment number either see students coming back and parents saying, no, I want to come back because we're going to be in a regular model next year, hopefully. Or or we're going the opposite way because we're still providing hybrid models and remote models and whatever model you can think of. Last sheet that you have is our current enrollment stands at 2,255 students. That's all in excluding choice and reads when you add those two, we're at 2467, just under the 2,500 number, which is where we've been pretty much hovering. Our out-of-district population is at 44 students. That's considered part of our regular district enrollment as well. That's why you get you get to 2255. When you look at that and the projections that are coming through, it's off by about 50 students. So I think it's 43, if I remember correctly. So to the good. So so that's that's a good thing. So those are the the latest numbers. We'll crunch those numbers of current students that we have in the projections. We're going to add a little something different this year to the budget process by giving you a projected classroom enrollment. I really want to talk about the classroom and how many kids we project to have in that classroom for next year. And of course, it's it's all a good, hopefully, a good educational guess. That is it.
Thanks for that update. Any questions or comments? I think if I could just sort of commend you, Dr. Bayetta, and your staff, I think when you sort of proposed the idea of school choice, I think it was certainly something unique and different, something that other districts weren't doing, and I think we all can agree that we have really reaped the benefits from kind of what that has offered to us, not only for the students who come and join our community, but certainly the financial impact of that. So I thank you for sort of having kind of the the wisdom and the you know, insight to really think about that as an option for Norton.
I I appreciate that, and I appreciate the school committee's support, and and I should have said this, but when you calculate this out in general, our first year, no less than $260,000, because as you know, if a student has an IEP and has some services, the the amount can go above 5,000. But no, no less than 260,000, and this year projected it somewhere in the 840 minimum thousand for 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 the year. So that that it's been a lifesaver for us. And as you know, and I think Karen, who's on the line today, it's it's been our one-to-one. It's been the one-time cost of new curriculum additions. It's been you it's been the professional development around trauma-sensitive schools and making sure that our teachers are being trained. I mean, the list goes on and on and on about where we've been able to spend this money. I just said it to somebody the other day. We would probably still be waiting for one-to-one technology right now if it wasn't for our school choice program and Karen's aggressiveness to get it done and to move us forward. And we're now totally pre-K to 12, a one-to-one district, and we weren't the first out there, but we didn't do it in a way where we had bring your own device and, you know, one-to-one and and all that stuff. So really proud of it. So thanks for the kind words and all the work of my colleagues that I've done to make it work.
Well, I think it really is also representational of the community that we have in Norton, right, that the students who come as choice students feel connected enough with our with their peers in their classrooms, but also with their teachers, that they have made it something that is now interesting to so many. The fact that we've increased from 52 students year one to over, you know, almost 170 students in just a few years is really, I think, quite a nice testimony to how well it's working and and how comfortable the the choice students are in our community. So thanks also to our staff and our students as well, who really welcome them.
Yeah, well.
Be part of their grade. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on. Review and vote of new Norton High School courses for 2021, 2022. So Mr. Dolman and Vinnie as well.
Thank you very much. So I think I'll speak first, and then Mr. Sersi was going to jump in with some further details here as well. But just before we begin, what you're looking at in your your packet are the application or proposal forms. And just sort of to give you an idea of the the sort of process that we go through with this is we talk with our academic coordinators about new course proposals. They distribute these forms to teachers within their departments. They sort of generate the new courses as far as where they fit scope and sequence-wise within their department. Then the teacher goes about sort of creating the curriculum, aligning it to our portion of graduate standards and sort of student actions. And then from there, they propose these courses to our academic coordinators group as a whole, where we offer feedback. And then from there, they go in to be approved by our site council, which has representatives from the community and student body, teachers and administrators at the high school as well. And so there are two courses that we really have proposed today, and then there's one other that I'll just sort of mention, which is a little bit of an alteration of a course in order to make it a little bit more streamlined for students to take is our engineering course, which I'll just talk a little bit about at the end. The first course here is filling a need at the high school for more chemistry instruction. It's an organic chemistry course. This one was proposed by Lauren Bukowski, who's the academic coordinator for science. And what she's looking to do is to provide additional offerings in chemistry. We have pretty good offerings, variety of offerings in biology, things like zoology, environmental science, anatomy and physiology. We have some physics courses as well that are part of of this, and then this is going to kind of fill out our chemistry track. And the other idea with this is that it would serve as somewhat of a of a loop, perhaps, to prepare students who would be sort of taking AP chemistry as seniors. They would be better prepared in order to take that course. I know obviously where we sort of see the profile of students fitting into this are those who would be interested in the medical field, those who would be interested in taking sciences, particularly chemistry in the future and in college. So it would be greater preparation along those lines. If you take a look down within that the course there, really, it's aimed towards honor students. But it would be something that that could potentially also prepare college prep students in order to be able to maybe take an AP AP chemistry or something like that in the future. And it would be after students have taken regular chemistry, organic chemistry, and on the way to AP chemistry. The second course that's there.
Can I just interrupt?
You may. Sorry.
Just so we do one at a time. I think the other piece of this is we do try to take into consideration sort of what students would need in college, and and Mr. Dolman already said, you know, for a variety of of the sciences, medical fields, dentistry, really, any of those areas, this is going to be something that many of those students would be required to take at the at the college level. And if you look at it from a career perspective, this is part of that whole moving forward STEM and and we we definitely felt in the feedback that this would be something that colleges would look upon in a very positive manner. So it definitely fits that need. It also gives us a little bit more flexibility around some of our science electives. We, as you folks know, you propose approved forensics two years ago. It's a it's in high, high demand. And some of those students have also expressed interest in in organics chemistry. So it fits in a lot of different ways, both from a scheduling perspective, but also from a college and careers perspective.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sersi. So moving on to the second course, and the department on this course is a little bit fluid because of the nature of the course, and this is one thing that makes me somewhat excited about this course is that it's very interdisciplinary. It's proposed by Eric Grasso, who is a math teacher at the high school. He is also proposing this within sort of the field of social science with economics, but also within business. And as you can see, one of the people sort of involved in crafting the course and potentially influencing some of the teaching of the course is an English teacher. And so the idea would be a two semester electives that are interdisciplinary, looking at math, business, social studies, human behavior, psychology, bringing in all sorts of different sort of pathways to this one course. It would also provide some of the sort of philosophical underpinnings of many of our business courses and provide a lot of sort of background and sort of philosophical ideas that underlay some of those business courses that we take, such as entrepreneurship, marketing, those types of things as they move through. So it's an elective course that would be open to college prep students, really, just about any grade level who had an interest in the in the courses. And they would move into this course and basically be able to expand their understanding, like I say, of this through an interdisciplinary way and incorporating some mathematics along with that because of of Mr. Grasso's mathematics background. He would bring a lot of that to this as well. So a high-interest elective that is going to sort of help support our business electives, provide some interdisciplinary and project-based experiences for our students. So it's a pretty innovative course that we're that we're pretty excited about.
And in terms of, again, in terms of scheduling, we're we're actually breaking this up into two different like a practical economics and a behavioral economics. Again, as as Mr. Dolman said, it's definitely going to be for our helping our business students and, you know, tying it to macro and microeconomics as they enter college will will help them in that process. But I think it also opens up some some practical applications around sociology, psychology, covers a lot of different interdisciplinary aspects of moving into different careers. So again, that's something that will help students experience different fields, get an idea of how things work in sort of a practical, real-life situation.
And just the other adjustment that I alluded to in our program of studies has to do with our engineering course, which right now is a year-long course that's also in the second semester accompanied by an honors elective lab where students get into the woodshop and actually put into play some of the things that they've learned through project throughout the course of the year. And the idea is to break that up into actually three different and discreet semester courses. So it would still have the very hands-on, practical nature in the woodshop, but it would also allow sort of the other two parts of the engineering course to be broken apart. And the idea here is is someone could certainly take a traditional path and take all three of those. But that sometimes is really hard to make happen scheduling-wise. So the idea here would be to provide opportunities for more students to take, if not all of it, at least parts of it, and have that experience. And it also, those who are really interested in it oftentimes are taking a really rigorous course load as well, which makes it very difficult to schedule. So in this case, it would be much easier to schedule those things for those students. I didn't know if you had anything to add to that, Mr. Sersi.
No, I think you covered that right, right up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, on the recommendation of the high school principal, it does require a vote of the school committee, and I'm supporting these as published.
Is there any comments or questions?
Can I ask? There were a couple of different economics disciplines thrown around, but it wasn't clear to me, other than these two that we're proposing right now. Do we have any economics classes currently?
There we don't have any sort of economics classes. No, we have our business classes. And so there used to be a social studies elective at, which was economics principally or mostly microeconomics that existed in in past years. I think it ran the most recently, according to our social studies academic coordinators, about 2013. So this would be partially resurrecting that, but inserting, because of the interdisciplinary approach, inserting some other things that would be more project-based and not not strictly a microeconomics. There is maybe hope and discussion that down the line, maybe this would lead to something like that. There are also AP, micro and macroeconomics courses that could be sort of offshoots of this. But this is designed right now to be very high interest to give a lot of our students who are taking business courses, some of that project-based interdisciplinary background in it. So it's not like a a straight micro or a straight macroeconomics.
All right. For what it's worth, I'd be very in favor of more economics classes, so.
Can I just ask, how does it work? I know you have mentioned it's interdisciplinary. I can see that Dr. Kiefer and Mr. Grasso have sort of proposed that these courses. So would one teach one semester and the other? Is is that kind of how it works, or do they co-teach or?
So I mean, at the time, it would be really dependent on sort of the demand for the course, as far as what kind of resources we could contribute to it staffing-wise. If this were something that were of high demand of students, obviously, Mr. Grasso would probably be teaching it independently with some additional support from Dr. Kiefer. They were collaborating on kind of putting together the the ideas. Both of them have experience teaching similar courses at the community college level, so they were going to be introducing those ideas. So they both proposed it. You know, I think Mr. Grasso would be the one who would teach it for the first time as we kind of think about some of the staffing. But down the line, it might be something that could grow if there were multiple sections or something along those lines.
Great, thank you. Is Dr. Bayetta, can we vote these courses together or are they separate?
I would request that we vote them separately, please.
Separate, okay. There you go. Is there a motion to approve the Norton High School course proposal for organic chemistry?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn is a yes. And is there a motion to approve the two half-year courses, Practical Economics and Behavioral Economics?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn's a yes. Thank you. Dr. Bayetta? Discussion and vote on Student Opportunity Act?
One of the things that I really like to do is to work not only myself, but my people, in this case, Jen, really, really hard and file things with the Department of Elementary, Secondhand Education after they took the money from us. The Student Opportunity Act was filed in order to provide local districts more funding based on a formula, as you know, from last year, where we're increasing over a period of five fiscal years, significant funding to public education at the local level based on things like high needs with attention to poverty mostly. And significant number of communities were getting some significant funds, a couple of cities that I know of were looking at $11 million increase over X number of years, not including the regular increases. For us, we are one of the 170 districts that are under the hold harmless provision, which basically means we're going to give you somewhere between $25 and $50. which basically means we're going to give you somewhere between twenty-five and fifty dollars per student. And that's what you're getting from the Commonwealth. And as you know, all five of you know, that's been our history for the last, at least the seven years that I've been with you. So our increase is seventy-two thousand, but it's still considered a Student Opportunity Act. And, but the money is currently not there. It's not being given to us. It's actually was going to be given to us, and then with the pandemic hit, it was taken back. But we are still, thanks to, and Jen, feel free to pop in. We are still required to file this by January fifteenth. So as you can see, I tried not to do it because I just don't like playing secretary for people and having to do things that the money isn't there. So we're required to do it. So we are going to focus on student subgroups. We're going to commit to using evidence-based programs to close gaps. And we're going to monitor our success and we're going to engage our families. And so those are our four commitment areas that we're going to be going forward with. And as you see from the application, which is really exciting, we are decided and already hired and already have, and our spendings therefore have a seventy-two thousand dollar deficit on supporting more inclusionary practices in special education at the secondary level with attention to Norton High School, which we did do, we in fact have that person on. It's working well and we're moving forward. And then we're utilizing, would be utilizing, but now are utilizing our regular budget to actually offset and pay for the metric process, which as you know, you may recall the Panorama system, which does all of our surveys with students, staff, and so on and so forth around SEL and other topics. So that would also be part of our programming as a way to track, report out, improve and monitor the, the the subgroups of students that we are trying to support at another level at Norton High School. Go ahead.
Mention Panorama also has a student success platform aspect, which takes the SEL data that they self-report, their attendance data, their behavioral discipline data, and their academic data and puts it all into one's place so that we can take a look at how students are performing across the board. It also gives teachers the opportunity to create intervention plans and to communicate with each other. So that is really, when we first sat down to develop the Student Opportunity Act plan, we felt like we had a good system in place that we enjoy using. We feel like it, it works well for what we needed for. So we thought that it would be a great opportunity to use some funds for that and then to back it up with the inclusion teacher. So as Joe said, we're doing it, we just didn't get the money for it.
So because we're required to do it, and, and which is fine, the paperwork, but you know, we had to establish the beginning of the school year. So we had to hire staff and do all of that. And at that time, we had it. And I get it. I mean, I understand what's happening with the pandemic and we still may see this money. You never know. There are extra funds that the Commonwealth is looking at for supporting public education beyond the federal stimulus money, which should be coming in by the end of the month. And then potentially the Biden administration as well, although that money is looking to be more towards probably going to cities and towns and then into departments. So we may see something, we may not see something in that proposal. But we're spending the forty-one, seven fifty thousand on the inclusion teacher and the thirty thousand two fifty on the survey and student success plan, which would have been in our budget anyways. If you remember the, the students success plan portal that Jen just talked about, we presented to you, I believe it was last fall, we did our first numbers, or I think it was the fall, can't remember the date now. But where we, we showed you how that works and who has access to it and so on and so forth. So we still maintain that and are doing that. It looks a little different now. The SOA plan has been sent in because I didn't meet a deadline anyways, which is fine, but it still requires that you vote on it. So I'm asking you to support the filing of the SOA and then we'll inform them that it's been filed. And maybe I'll get a cup of coffee out of it. That was sarcasm, sorry.
Got it. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Even though Joe said he's going to use the money for personal consumption of coffee, I, I vote yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, thank you.
I would have preferred a five zero no vote than a yes vote, but we'll leave it at that.
Lot of work. Nothing is easy. And we will move it to other business, Dr. Byetta.
Just two quick announcements. Number one, the, there will be a joint Select Board Finance Committee, School Committee meeting next Thursday at six PM. Information to come to you. If you have an agenda item that belongs, this, this agenda is being written as those items that need to be discussed between the three groups. It's not, we're going to have a meeting and then they have a meeting, then we come together. It's all about just the topics that, so Carolyn, you'll be probably part as the chair of the emails between you, the Select Board Chair, Jack Conway, and myself and Mike Units, just to, so we can put a calendar, an agenda. I, I do have the TRA, N E, calendar of events that I sent to you today. That will be part of my presenting to them. And that, so if you have something you really want, could you just email me by Monday morning? That would be great.
Yep, I will.
And then the second announcement is the TRA, N E, which is the performance contract around utilities and savings of costs. And so I gave that to you. I can speak more about it next week, but this gives you the timelines. We met with Leo from TRA today and his team, and we're expecting to start as soon as this coming summer, depending, of course, everything to do with COVID and town meetings and all that stuff. I will tell you that we've had a heat situation at Norton Middle School. And this is just one example, trying to find a new HVAC system for that part of the middle school. It's the front office. We've had no heat in the front office for weeks now. We're literally running with, if it was, if it was classrooms, we would probably have the building closed. We tried to find the parts for it, it was weeks away. So thank you to my staff at the middle school for dealing with it being a little colder and having to deal with, with plug-in electronic, electrical heaters. But they're, they're going to be bringing in a crane to take the HVAC unit and put it on our roof at the middle school on Monday and implementing and putting heat should be up and fired up by Wednesday at the latest, if the weather, weather permitting. So an example of a good relationship and getting something done right away and working with the company that has access to get things right away instead of through the typical process. So thanks to them. And we'll talk about it more specifically next week on, you know, what, what are some of the projects? The TRA guys have been in and out of our buildings and property for weeks now, looking at things. So it looks like the schools would be in phase one solely because the schools utilize the most energy, fuel consumption based upon all of our square footage and the number of people in and out of our facility. So that's, that's the typical way that it's done in most communities anyways. That is it.
That's it. Sounds good. Any other questions, comments?
Carolyn, I just have a couple of things. I just would ask that everyone keep our Norton police officer, who is fighting for his life right now with COVID, in our thoughts and prayers. Things are, things are a bit tough today based on an update from his wife. So just to continue to pray for him and also just to extend our condolences to Chief Clark. He lost his mom this week.
Thanks, Sherry, for bringing that to our attention. It's been certainly a difficult year for so many. And starting off the year with so much difficulty is very sad. So I guess we all, you know, Dr. Byetta, you had made a comment about the vaccinations. I think we're all just, you know, I mean, I can speak for myself, just hopeful that this really does help us get back to some level of health and normalcy. And I think it's been since March, really so difficult to just sort of navigate the change, the, the chaos, the difficulty of what a pandemic has created. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. I do have a question about that, Dr. Byetta. Is, you and I had talked about the vaccinations perhaps being administered at the school, which I know your reasons for thinking that that would be a good option. And they could be kept at the school. We have the, the refrigeration or freezer capacity.
Right, so the Norton Board of Health is currently under Christian's honor, literally working on planning and the needs and the refrigeration and all of that. Our role was to think of the best place to distribute it, not only potentially for our employees, but also for the town. And so we offered the, what we thought was the best site for traffic flow and all of that, which was Norton Middle School, just like the voting. And the reason is that these would be drive-by vaccinations in the car, not coming into the building. Now, that could have changed since the original meeting. But we're, we're involved as a site support for the Board of Health only. And so Christian and the group is really the, the ones that are working the plans. I think they're probably waiting on some specificity from the state in terms of, will they get the freezer that can hold things at minus ninety, whatever degrees it is versus minus forty-five degrees? And what are the other things that, that could be used in our refrigerators or our freezers that might be able to handle it? We don't know that yet. So as soon as I do, I'll make sure that I inform you guys as well.
I think it's just really, again, the, the level of collaboration with you on behalf of Norton Public Schools, but also the Board of Health of the town. It's been nice to see sort of everybody working together because I think it's really important for all of us to maybe try to come up with a plan that supports our community as best as possible.
Thank you for that, yeah. We've, we've had a fantastic working relationship with all the departments, but specifically in the last few months, the Board of Health, it's, it's daily between our nurses and Donald Palmer over at, at the Board of Health. Myself and Christian talk pretty much weekly, you know, and, and even weekends. So it is what it is. But yeah, they're doing a great job. They're doing a really good job.
Great. There is a question, I'm not sure Jen or Dr. Byetta, if you wanted to answer, does live instruction increase email? Does the live instruction increase email? Oh, does the live instruction increase email that you sent today apply to parent choice remote? Sorry.
Sorry, it does not apply to parent choice remote. However, we are currently internally working on our own way to facilitate that at a more face-to-face time for that choice program. More to come in the coming weeks. It's a process because we have to change some schedules and all of that. But we're trying to, we are, we are definitely trying to increase the amount of time that those students are seeing their teachers.
Great. All right, it looks like we are set for now. Dr. Byetta, I also wanted to thank you. I know you had sent out an email. I don't even remember when it came, sort of sharing while we were on break, sharing that we were going to be coming back to a hybrid schedule. If we were in, in sort of if your students were, or if your children were hybrid. I have to be honest and tell you, I was really surprised by that because in my head, I just said, there's no way. So many schools were sort of calling it early. I think even before the break, they were already calling that they were going to sort of start remotely in January. So thank you for, for sort of waiting and taking the time necessary to kind of see where we're at. I just wanted to kind of put out there again, just to remind families, anybody who is listening, that these kinds of decisions can change in a minute, right? So in your email, I said we were coming back to that hybrid model. And immediately I said, oh, he should have probably written that that could change because I think you sent it probably three days or four days before we were actually coming back to school. I can't remember when you sent it.
I sent it Wednesday.
You sent it on Wednesday and we were coming back on Monday. And I said, oh gosh, because I could just envision that we would be getting a phone call on Friday saying, oh, by the way, things have changed. So I just want to make sure, even if it's not sort of clearly stated, that those decisions can change. It's just sort of a day to day to see where we're at. I think it's important that everybody knows we get emails at least once or twice a week, if not more, with numbers sort of of, of students and staff who are either positive or quarantining or isolating. And, you know, we, we really are trying to manage it, but we just never can quite prepare for a shift in numbers that goes in sort of a more opposite direction. So, and I think we all know that potentially everybody, if we listen to the news, if we listen to sort of the numbers that are being shared more sort of statewide and sort of nationally, everybody's a little concerned about the, the sort of numbers that will be coming out next week and sort of the following week after a holiday break and some travel that happens. So we'll all keep our fingers crossed that that doesn't impact us in Norton.
Yeah, and please, www.norton.k12.me.us, right on our website. It's the first icon on the left that you can hit on information and it takes you right to the dashboard. We put the dashboard up usually between sometime between two thirty and four o'clock. We have all our collective numbers for the day. It's done by day. So it's just a total, not for that day, but a running total. So where I, I believe today was seventy-three total, of which twelve were positive and the remaining were quarantining situations. And I will tell you, and we're also very, we try to be very conservative in making our decisions via the nurse's office, the building principal in my office, and in discussions with others about, you know, a classroom going home or a group of kids. You know, we don't have this teeter totter with the kids. We really just say, no, we're going to be cautious, child, children are going home. So you're right, the, the general gist of, of how cute is that, Dolman, huh? And is, is to, is to make sure that we just stay safe. That's the, I guess I'll just end there. Stay safe.
Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting of January seventh, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. See everybody next week.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi, everybody.